We got like 20 seconds. All right, we're close enough. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming out. Couple of ground rules, silence your cell phones, please. We're gonna give the audience an opportunity for public comment at the end of each presentation before we take any action. So try to keep your comments to yourself until we give you an opportunity to come up and speak. And when you do want to make public comment, we ask that you come up and use a microphone at the podium. That being said, first thing on our agenda is approval of our August 12th meeting minutes. Do you have any corrections, questions?
No, I have none.
Recommend the approval of the August 12th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
On favor?
I, I will stand.
I will just stand as well. Alex and I are standing since we weren't at the last meeting. Action plans? We don't have anything?
No.
All right, we'll get into our first presentation, be Carolyn Hill. Have representation?
No, they don't. Oh, I did speak to their engineer today. He was not able to attend. If you remember, and this was a two lot subdivision on Carolyn Hill and Township Road. I forget what we changed the name to Township Road. Plan was approved quite some time back, but there was a lot of back and forth between Southern Borough, Sellersville Borough, about how they were gonna serve that site with sewer. Remember, the old house was connected up into the development in Sellersville Borough. And that's what they're gonna do with the new house, with the proposed lot. DEP decided that they needed to do a full sewage planning module to accomplish that single lot connection to the system. So this is the, before you tonight is for comment on component four A for the public sewer connection for that single log. That's part of an approved subdivision. So I included my correspondence, some suggested responses, which essentially indicate that it's all in compliance with catch ordinances. If you're in agreement with the draft comments, we would just need a motion to authorize the chairman to sign component, or if you wanted to add some comments, we can do that also.
I have nothing to add. Any?
No.
So we move forward and recommend moving forward, having me sign this.
This is just to authorize the signing of the four A, right?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
On favor?
All right.
I pose question, Karen. Thank you. All right, so at some point, I'm gonna get some sign for that.
Yeah, it's the end of the meeting.
All right, anything else on that?
No.
All right, next one will be Cat Hill Road. Have representation?
Yes.
Come on up to the podium, please.
Hello, Joe Marley, National Land Developers. Want me to just go get into it, or we have a slide, slide presentation?
Yeah, however you want to proceed.
Okay.
We'll let you do a presentation and then we'll start asking questions.
Yeah, so National Land Developers, we specialize in industrial property. We work throughout the state of Pennsylvania, New Jersey, working with old storage, warehousing, anything to do with industrial. We've met with the landowner of 215 Cat Hill, worked out an opportunity to purchase the property. My understanding is, last time he was in here, he was looking to put a pretty large warehouse, some, some large.
I apologize.
Yeah, very large. So he has some height variance and so forth. We looked at that, we had a couple of clients that were interested in doing the same kind of use. We came up here, I met with Township Manager, and we saw the property, walked through it. And he said, hey, you know, one of the problems we have is truck traffic and traffic going by the residence and, you know, currently it's zoned, you know, it's zoned industrial, and obviously I think everybody knows that, you know, next door, you got 309, the other side is a manufacturing. You know, some of the uses now, like you can do large retail, there's repair shops, vehicle fueling station, contractor services, truck terminals approved, industrial park you can do. So when we were talking and trying to figure out, you know, what the best use would be, but also have the township and the residents, you know, be okay with it, obviously something's gonna be done here. We started looking at uses that don't have as much trucks and don't have as much traffic, because we know that's a big issue. We met with a consultant, Greater By Design, Adam's here. And he looked at it and said, hey, you know, have you looked at a data center opportunity? So data center is a big buzzword, everybody's talking about it. Not every area is appropriate for one, you need power, you need fiber, you need some other different uses. And Adam will get into those uses, but we looked at everything, we said, hey, this could be a great opportunity for this location. So we kinda wanted to present, you know, what a data center is, what, what could be here, what we were kinda proposing as an idea, and we kinda wanted some feedback. So I'm gonna induce Adam right now, he'll come up and give you more details about the data.
That, all right, that's the best control, I'm not data centers, I know, technology I don't love. So let me just do a quick introduction, data centers, familiar, not familiar, heard, not heard. Phones on us, everybody, look at your applications. This gives you, if you really want to understand kinda what they are, let me give you like just a two minute thing and then I'll run through the PowerPoint, because I think it's easier kinda just to talk and then you can, we can reemphasize that way, if you have other questions, you can go over it twice. So along comes a spider, COVID erupts, everybody decides they're gonna work at home, they're gonna do something, right? Storage, phone, messages, applications, and I said, go through your apps, right, grandkids, kids, blah, 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 photos, banking applications, all of this is happening at what we call a real time level. And I know this is gonna sound strange, but if any of you have kids and grandkids who are video gamers, there's a standard, and the standard for speed, or why, when you get your application and you punch it and you want your bank account, or you want your movie, or you want your whatever, the gamers actually decide that speed, because they play in a real time world where reactions are real time. And so, so data centers have come along because we're in need of a bunch of different things. One, it is the fact that we are, some might say slightly addicted to the phones and to the data streams. It has increased monumentally. Along comes a second spider, which is what we call data sovereignty. There has been a lot of talk, it began with TikTok and China, and who has access to the data, and who's seeing your data, and who is in charge of that data. And a race began a couple of years ago, and only further exemplified, magnified in the last year, to be able to build enough capacity in the United States, Canada, Europe, right, they have their own sovereignty issues. But effectively, get it out of Russia, get it out of China, get it out of places we control, because it's your banking. It's a lot of stuff that people don't realize is here. And so data centers come along to begin to look for properties, as Joe said, they're unique. They've gotta have their industrial in their nature. They've grown and learned a lot, like any first go at it, and I've been at it for a long time with first goes, the first ones suck. That's the technical word. They're terrible. The beginning of the data center world 10 years ago was, I started 18 years ago, the largest one was McGraw Hill, I don't know if you know them, but they were moving books for the schools to online, it was the beginning of your kids carrying the 40 pound backpacks, right? And that was my largest, 18 years ago, when I started, it was 14 megawatts. Today, that's not even so small that you couldn't see that anymore. So the, the industry has changed tremendously, but it is really now a race whereby which folks are beginning to now look out over the next three years, this will be the sighting of these data centers, after that, that sighting will fall way off. And there's a reason for that, at that point, they will have what I call technological density, enough power density, that when the AI evolves into the quantum, evolves into other things that we're not here to guess about, but they will evolve, then there is space to fit it in the US. One last thing, and then I'll go through the PowerPoint very quick. The data center itself, there are three kinds of these. And I want you to kinda think again about the phone and your reaction to banking and things that you want instantaneously. So the first side of this is something called an edge, and the edge is exactly what it sounds like. These are smaller data centers, they wanna be on the edge of people. They wanna be near humans, so that when you press Lyft, Uber, whatever you want, like it's responding in a way that's close enough. If you wanna know what that means for one thousandths of a second, that's latency in lines, right? And so that little edge wants to be able to sell you stuff, it wants to be able to be in tune with your, your kinda day to day needs. There's a second kid out there called the hyperscale, and that is storage, just outright storage. Like, if you guys ever saw how many videos, phones, pictures, movies, we can now move a terabyte of data, that means in one second I can remove all the books ever written on the planet Earth. One second. And so this begins to show you how much data, just tonight, accumulating of data, when you think about it, it's happening, it's the storage. There's the last kid everybody's heard about, that's the AI, right? The AI is very interesting, because people think it's Arnold Schwarzenegger in Terminator, not yet, I'm not gonna speak to it, but that's not what it is. The AI is a data center that hunts other data centers. What it's basically doing is, if you wanted to ask me about pizza before, the data center said, great, here's the local pizza place today. The data center wants to reach to another data center and another in the AI and begin to talk about everything there is to know about pizza. And it's reaching out in a network that's literally connected through these wires. And that AI is beginning to do things as it trains. And I'm just gonna give you a very simple example of how complicated you all are as humans. When United Airlines, pick your favorite one, I don't care. They're the one I got the miles on, that's my favorite. They go out and they take 65 megawatts of an AI campus, and they're training this AI for the next couple of years. Why? Because the AI can't help you yet. It doesn't know why you go to the airport, it doesn't know that you need to eat. It doesn't know the FAA runs one thing, the Port Authority runs another thing, it has no idea why you need a bathroom on an airplane. Does not know that. You have to teach it, all of that. When you teach it all of it, it will eventually grow into, like ChatGPT can, when you ask it to do things, it will learn enough to respond to you and begin to generate. And so back to those three markets, if you think about United for a second, they will go out, they're gonna, they're gonna train this thing to learn everything there is, right? They're gonna then export that to the edge, where you now can use it, because if it's so slow, you're gonna be frustrated when that plane can't connect, because you can't connect either. And then once you do that, it will send all that data back to the middle, to the storage part of it, to keep all these transactions in perpetuity. And so that's the idea, right? These places are connected, they're moving data, they speak to one another, they have relationship between you and your phone, you and your storage, and then a relationship that's growing between you and the services you're asking it for. Can you write my homework? I teach at Rutgers, so this is one of the things we watch, the AI can bust the AI for the record. And so this is why we're here, right? One last thing, and then I'll jump very quickly to kinda answer anything. I said before, we've learned, there are data centers in Arizona, there's no water in Arizona. We have learned in an industry that you can come in sloppy in the beginning and get away with it, Virginia. But when you come out into the future, you're gonna get tough questions about water, about noise, about power, about all kinds of things. And so my company's Greater By Design, they did not love me in the beginning, because they had freedom to do what they want. To be honest, I don't think anyone knew who they were when they arrived in the beginning. Today, the designs are much different, right, we're air cooled, we're avoiding water, where possible, it's more expensive than anything and headache politically, to be honest. And so we wanna use air cooled systems, we design now so that our buildings sit to one another, all noise is contained, emergency generators, all that is contained to backside, it's manifolded, so that it's wrapped, right, noise 65 plus decibel walls to contain it. And even on the potable water, the wastewater side, we're now pretty much closed, right, we can close loop. The design standards can be altered to fit the ground, because I think folks have learned that if you're gonna have a standard, one size fits all design, and you need this water, this, you're gonna find very few places want you, but also very few places can afford you. And so that's the big change in the data centers, they are getting smarter and wiser, because it's a race to try and build them while we can. So with that, I can, why don't we just kinda flip through a couple of these, right? You guys heard about that, we're who we are, and you know, we're here to talk to folks about how it works, and most importantly, if there are concerns, that the data center community knows what those are. Because they wanna address them, well, in advance. We can flip. Right, this kinda tells you the size, and they range tremendously, just everything is about megawatts, you see the MW megawatts, right? Everybody talks in square foot, they don't talk in square feet. Everyone talks in acres, they do not talk in acres, they purely talk in megawatts, megawatts is a power term. And they will arrange their building and density based on power, not the reverse, right? They literally build from the inside out, and they look at how the density of the building is fit together, and then they come outside. So we try and translate that to square footage where possible.
So question, so how far from the high density area does it have to be that you're putting it right here in the area, like you say Arizona, it's Arizona, it's got plenty of open area, is it, why aren't you putting it in an open area?
Hundred miles from cities, you wanna be about 100 miles from like a major city. And it can feed multiple cities, so from here, you can feed Philadelphia, you can feed New York, you can feed a little edge of Connecticut too. And so what that's doing is, as you become, as the data center is looking at who I'm selling to ultimately, right? Is it Lyft, Uber, Bank of America, United, whoever's buying it, they wanna try and serve the most population. So I don't necessarily wanna be here, but some in New York, like Virginia, they do serve the markets. But today, the, the fiber allows me to reach all of those markets inside six milliseconds. So I'm kinda, if you like, broadened out the circles, you guys are close to those markets, so why they wanna be here, you're close to those markets, they like, like exit eight off the New Jersey turnpike.
So it doesn't make it like a target then, as like someone's targeting you? Shut everything down?
Gotta help me.
Well, like a couple of weeks ago, we had to shut down with our cell phones, everybody went crazy, it was like three days, they were trying to fix some lines, so.
Oh, no, no, fiber, your telecommunication and fiber were separate, so I should've said that, sorry. So fiber, we run on dedicated fiber, the fiber is not like your Comcast fiber and your Verizon fiber, it's a, it's a much richer fiber. We move thousands of bytes a second, because I'm communicating like not your banking, but everyone in here's phone. All of them are gonna, if you're using it for data, cellular, different network than us. So I know, will it enhance your internet, you know, your access in terms of applications to your phones, faster speeds? Yes, you guys will have faster speeds here. So fiber that'll deliver that, it's called dark fiber. Go ahead, we can flip through, and then please, if there are questions.
A little more to this question, are we, does it become a target for identity theft, that is
No, no, they're, no, no, these are great questions, because they relate, they relate to two things, one, just caution, right, everybody, if they call you, they're not real. But no, right, so, so what we are doing, right, is operating the applications in the macro sense, right? They are exporting everything that comes out, because out to a series of hotels, which are data hotels, and then it comes live to you. So the data center is isolated, dark fiber, we can send out, nobody can get in, because it's not just you. It's, it's, we are the hub. Can they get to your phone different? If, if you don't do the right thing, yes. Does it enhance or detract from it as a data center? No, it will have no relationship to it. To your point, you wanna be super careful with these applications, I go back to that data sovereignty. There's a lot of pushing scams in this kinda world for that, so, but to answer the question, no. Data center is one way highway in, its own dark fiber, its own transmission power, it does not interfere with your distribution electric power, which is often, people think it's gonna increase bills, we are, we build our own transmission, we work with the utility. We're nighttime users, where you guys are not nighttime users, and so if you kinda look at the curve of how you do life, you know, kinda 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM deal, the data center runs like straight, just like that. From counsel, I don't know what the proper.
Hang on, yeah, I mean, the protocol is you wait till the end of the presentation, there is a lot of information coming, coming here. I'll open the floor, just raise your hand if you have a question for him, but let me address you first. So somebody have a question? Yes, go ahead.
You had mentioned, I don't know if I misunderstood you, do you don't wanna be within 100 miles of a major city?
No, we do, we wanna be roughly 100, maybe 120 miles, and if you kinda back up and you just picked like New York, Philadelphia, kinda jumped over to like a little bit of the western edge, a little bit of Connecticut, north edge, and you kinda popped down and drew a circle, you're not far from there. Yeah, 120 at the edge, at seven, eight milliseconds, you will notice that your bank took that second, and believe it or not, they get complaints, that people get frustrated by it.
Let me ask you a question, we, you had talked about, well, not cyber attack, but is, is this type of operation something that's susceptible to terrorist attack?
And is it susceptible, no, in the sense that we're secured, we have our own fence, our own security, we watch very carefully, we work with FBI and everybody else.
Has there ever been an attempt at knocking one of these centers out?
I'll be careful in public record, has there been an open attempt that the public is aware, probably not. Have there been attempts to knock them out? Yes, there certainly have been attempts. I, I, when you're off island and casinos, if you think, if you all been in a Marriott or a Hilton that has a casino, you can be assured, we have a data center, because the cameras have to watch, right, and we have to record and all that stuff. Are we aware that Secret Service and others watch for Chinese fishing boats, are they watching for other things to make sure the data, data sovereignty is kept? We are. It is why people are here, they wanna have it in the US and give Canada, Canada's also growing quickly. But we worry as you get more off island and you start to get into Aruba and other places, because the data has to travel underwater in a cable, like there's no, I know this works like remotely. We don't do that, we're in like hard wires underground, so to answer the question, no, we, we're, we work very carefully with security. And we are aware of cyber threats to us, which is why we do not allow a two way highway, and it's our dark fiber, we own the fiber, we don't touch your fiber, because then we might co-mingle in, that's a formula for badness.
Go ahead, Joe.
Where is your closest data center today from us?
Oh, a couple of the, 20 miles, a couple of the universities have them around here. You know, you'll find more density as you get towards the Philadelphia market, but there's probably 40 data centers within 100 miles here, they're smaller, right, because they're now growing in capacity as they are shrinking number, but growing size.
Will this one for the size or capacity incorporate those?
No, I know, nah, no, they, universities made their own, their own network, because they're adding so much incremental data, they gotta maintain records 10 years, every new class of students, blah, blah, blah. The research guys kinda leave, they don't want either. And then the big one out here is professional services, engineers, lawyers, you got a lot of folks keep their data out here, because it's a little less expensive to store it out here than like into a major metropolitan.
Or B, the less, your assistant townships currently, any examples of which ones where, what you're actually going for?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can, through counsel, I can have a list, my website has all of them on there too, but I can provide, we do four things, right? The first, and this one is microgrid designs a little bit, I don't know if you know the microgrid world, but power design, right? So the first thing I'm doing is looking at their infrastructure, what does it look like? What's it able to maintain? And a lot of these times, they're like industrial parks or brownfield redevelopment, so I'm trying to assess, like, what is it, like, and and how, how dirty might dirty be, or how clean might clean be, right? Second thing is power, and power includes gas, it includes like all kinds of like things that are power, electric, gas, but within that pressure, is it fuel cells, is it other things that we can look at? Third thing is regulations, I need to know everything that's regulated, I heard your DEP opening. And so I need to know if the DEP, DEC, pick the regulator, if there's a threatened species within 100 miles that restricts development for six months a year, I need to know it, so that we're thoughtful about that. And then the last thing, I'm working with them just on what I'll loosely call the overall implementation. What are the jobs, what's kinda economics it'll produce, people are interested in ratables and other things that come out of it, and you know, make.
So the ones that you're assisting were townships that actually contracted you, hired your company to help them?
Yeah.
So if your website has examples of which ones they are?
Yeah, you, a lot of them are microrids originally, they were designed after Sandy to be power resilient. And then the power resiliency put up a thing to people who build power resilient things, data centers, hospitals, refrigerated warehouses, they showed up.
Go ahead.
As far as this, how this thing work, you said all your fiber stuff is underground, so there's nothing like, you're not gonna be building like these big electrical towers or towers in the sky, or you know, on the ground?
Separate out too, fiber is, that's data, that's where the telecommunications, think of it like Comcast, right? The wires don't look a lot different than that, they, they will reside underground, they will hang on poles too, like they do today, it just depends on where you are. So power is different, that's the utility, and I heard y'all might have some line replacements, the utility in general, like we hang on their poles. Their approach depends, they are getting bigger, if you haven't noticed, since a lot of the storms, there are larger towers, they're going for like 110 foot monopoles. We will be on their tower, we don't cause what they build, that's their design, they are already upgrading here. The only last thing that we look at is gas, and you know, its availability, because that's the last piece, that's also fed underground.
And does your process emit any like radioactivity type stuff, any kind of stuff like that that could impact the environment, people around it, people working in the industry next door, the people that live across the street, does it emit anything that is harmful?
No, I mean, it has, it has a substation, just like any substation would, but today's, their aerial design, there's no what we're loosely harmonic effects in the 90s, right? Those are, you're, again, the utility has done away with that a lot in the design side. There's no radiologicals on site, we have servers, backup power. But no, no, no radiological, if you will.
Nothing harmful to the surrounding area?
No, I mean, we're, you'll find us in the, like, you'll find us in like interest, right, most hospitals have micro data centers today onboard in the basement, because they have backup power supplies and they can carry five to 10 megawatts, because they're moving x-rays, they're moving everything else. You also find us in cities, we're like, we're in downtown, what's that?
They're micro, it sounds like it's.
They, they are smaller to fit the space, this is definitely a bigger version of it. But in general, there's no technologies that are out there that rely on it, it's not like the miniature nuclear things like that that people keep talking about. I think this right here is the reason those things will be far from coming into the future, because I think that would be tough at a point, sorry.
Down and back there.
We've gotten a plan of a few things, one, you said we're non-water usage. Different data centers have different designs and different cooling plants.
Correct.
Which type of data center are we talking about here? We're talking crypto guarantee based one?
No, no, crypto is, I would not count that as a data center. Yeah, though they definitely do, we're not, crypto is. Sure, not specifically designed, just early here, but I can tell you kinda location, it'll be mostly hyperscale.
So at what point is energy demand on this type of movement on our energy grid right now? Considering one in Virginia, there's an on, in the summer months, where it has to go by itself, there's a brownout that generates, activated its own diesel generator, keep it centered going.
Yeah.
Now I'm not hearing scalability, number of generators, number of times it's applied for testing purposes, the gas containment, the emissions containment.
Yeah.
I might understand how much water is being discharged in your particular facility or type of coolant containment system.
Well, like all processes, we'd go through a planning board, and with that, we would lay out the details of that, it would have to meet all the regulations, the DDP, and all of the parameters of the town. Current thinking is a hyperscale data center with some edge capability.
What is that retail in terms of resource?
Hyperscales are not AI, AI is liquid direct ship. It is, hold on, can I answer the question, sorry, I will answer it because you have an opportunity, if you have an answer already determined, you can take the determined answer. But if you want the answer, the design of the system is not an AI design. The AI design requires liquid to chip, which means a lot of liquid, which means a lot of power. Here, you're looking at what is an edge design with mostly hyperscale, right? Hyperscale is gonna be an air cooled system, because it doesn't run at the intensity level of the AI. The AI is, like, the AI is a 98% power factor, it's hunting and working, it is similar to what you brought up. Data, the crypto guys, right, because they run at like 100% power factor, so they burn the server out. Data, the crypto guys, right? Because they run at like a hundred percent power factor, so they burn the server out and then they go. And so here, you would look at a less intense, what I'll call power factor use, which means your cooling solution would be an air-cooled solution. We're not to design yet, because we haven't even gotten through like this part yet. But we recognize that it would have to be an air-cooled. One more thing, you said it before, there are a lot of designs. I always believe it's a backing in exercise. If ultimately the parameters are water, wastewater, noise, decibels, all the things that are going to be set by both rule and by what the community wants, then you set the standards for by which the data center must meet those, including buffering, sound recording, and all those other things. So.
You say it's a very cool system?
Yeah.
Sort of like a nuclear reactor?
No, in no way. It is, it's just an air-cooled chiller. If anybody works in the business, it's an air-cooled chiller. They, they're common marketplace chillers. They work in places, they generally work better in places where you have winter conditions. And there are fans that basically pull to heat you. So it's, it's a, it's a standard system. You can, I mean, we can send you examples of them as we get closer, but they're pretty standard. And you can size, that depends when you get to final design. It's a matter of economies of scale. You could size them for, you know, one megawatt, five megawatts. It just, that depends on selection of technology and what's available. So not, not even close to that in terms of design.
So that is the gentleman's question a little bit more quantitatively. From what I understand, you're saying is you haven't yet determined what your load is going to be?
No, not yet. We have to work with the utility. We have to work with you all. We have to work with kind of what the parameters are. In general, I know the location, and I know kind of what the data center community is going to want out here. It's not necessarily an AI thing. It's, it's much more storage because of how close you are to kind of lots of different, like, what I'll loosely call population centers.
And I noticed your site is convenient that you already have transmission lines running across it. So you've got the transmission availability there.
Correct.
Because as you said, you haven't yet determined what, how much of it you're going to need.
Yeah, yeah. We want to work with the utility. It'll, a little bit's dependent on them and step down. A little bit depends on the market still, which hasn't, like, you have to, we're so far out yet, you can't really test that. But the answer is, yeah, we're close to transmission lines. That is very helpful.
Okay, I know we have more questions. Yes.
We, sorry, Joe, final?
We were proposing, you know, from a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, maybe two of them, I think.
Yours?
Square feet.
Do you have those at that size or one zone?
It would probably be.
We're not getting any of this.
Again, that is, you have to design it and so forth, and go through all the planning to see if it's totally covered.
It's not, we haven't done any of the.
We got to slow this down. We're supposed to be catching all these, all these comments on, on the microphone.
Well, we're also way out in design now. We haven't done, we would never get in front of that at this point.
I mean, to go back to the size question, what, what you have, what you submitted to us is three hundred fifty. As, assuming it was a single building in this design.
Oh, we changed it and we ran out, I think, on, in this slide, in this slide.
We can pop through if you guys want.
Yeah, what, I'm sorry, what is your name again? Dan?
Adam.
Adam, I'm sorry. Can you, like, step back a little bit while you're going through this? Because I, I can't see that.
I was complimenting that this is actually the, when I normally do this, my butt faces the audience. So this is kind of the right, see, I didn't realize I was blocking.
You can actually get the microphone off.
You're gonna have to talk into the mic. Oh, okay.
You go remote.
That way it can.
Got it. All right, we can pop through. I just, I talked about this, right? These are, these are the kids. That's them. That's the difference, where we are, right? These are the different styles that I talked about before. We can go ahead, it's all. So one thing we're not, right? We, we do not require truck traffic. We're, we, we have pure ratables, if you will, not a lot of support services that are required to it. We are a natural disaster recovery. In other words, shelter of last resort. The data center will have, to the gentleman's comment, backup power. So for a lot of police, fire, emergency services, it can serve as shelter of last resort with backup power for the community. As you'll see in the design, they are modern buildings. And one last thing, in addition to the sort of jobs there, there are a lot of professionals that will work in, a lot of folks in the electrical world will be around the building a lot, so.
How many, how many employees would you, would you have on a, like I said, you have three hundred fifty thousand square feet, or I don't want your, did you?
The reason why I was there, because holder that came through before with previous owner had three hundred fifty thousand square footage. What he had put on here, a setback or something like that. So the building probably wouldn't be, it wouldn't be that big. He's got a standard, it should be all smaller than that.
Maybe two buildings?
Maybe one. We're not sure exactly what power.
So can we assume a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
All right. So how many employees do you think you would have in a facility that big?
Says here, two thirty-four.
I can't see.
Right, square footage, they run, and remember, I, I'll have some.
Three fifty, two thirty.
They are, they're shrinking. As we go forward in time, the buildings get smaller, the compute is, think of this, right? Everything is getting smaller on the electric world. So they're shrinking their footprint. That's why until we go to design, we won't know. It will not get bigger. It will get smaller.
Right. How many shifts?
Three shifts, eighteen employees. Think of it like a, you know, an ops center, right? Where they'll just be monitoring the building. And then in terms of construction, several hundred in terms of, you know, what I'll call ongoing maintenance, electrical, mostly, probably a couple hundred a year. But not a lot of full-time employees, right? High paying, but not a lot of traffic.
Do you know the decibels of the other facilities supporting this, what the decibels would be?
Sure.
I think it was three shifts.
Decibels in terms of backup power when they're engaged? Yeah, yeah. Most people want to know when the backup engines are on, because that's when it end. Usually, they range, because older ones are going to be higher, but they're sub sixty today, and it depends on kind of final design and layout, but call it fifty-four. So that's usually the floor when the generators are operating.
So what is the noise when you're not under generator power?
Forties, right? You know, you'll hear, it's an industrial building, but forties.
Where is that measured at?
It's, it depends on where the regulators, that's a town ordinance, but usually it's measured at the site. It's usually measured then at the some, what is standard distance from the site? And then what is the first human receptor? And sorry for calling you a human receptor, but that's the regulator's term for you all. So, so they measure in multiple places. I'll leave it lie, I'll leave it lie.
Does there be special training or equipment required for firefighters in our volunteer fire department?
No, we, the building will have its own suppression and everything else. We'll meet standards. But no, we have our own, everything is, given the expense of the servers in there, they are, the building is built very well with suppression. So and we can do chemical or water. We have choices. And yes, we will work with the volunteer firefighters to like walk through so everybody can kind of see how it operates. But we're in a lot of places that that's, the building's a special purpose building, and it's, it's got a lot of money under the hood.
All right, we'll have to keep on moving here.
All right, let's quick flip through. I think I've talked about this, right? Air-cooled system, low truck traffic, right? Noise below the limits, we just talked about. We just talked about building. I am not on your grid. I'm on a transmission level grid, not on a distribution level grid. And we just talked about emergency recovery. Why we're here, right? It's, it's got the right zoning. It's got the power lines that are here. It's got industrial around it. And as I described before, it's kind of in a really nice location, right? It's very centered up. So that, I don't know if you all have seen, but but that's generally the idea. And they are glass. They are, they're pretty designed, right? They're not, they're not ugly. That's it on approach, right? It's generally what they'll look like. You're going to have folks come in to visit once in a while who want to see them because their data's in there. And for whatever reason, once a year, people want to look, look at their data, even though it's in a server, but they will want to see it. We'll get a better name than Tech Building One Hundred, I promise, so.
What is the height?
Joe, what'd you lay high down?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
All right, do you guys, you have more on your?
Hey, we can just flip through, Joe. You are, these are the currently permitted uses of sort of what's alternative, if you will.
Right.
And then that's the typical truck layout.
And that's it. So you do have, you will have trucks?
No, that's a comp compared to what it used to look like.
I got you.
Scaring yourself.
Yeah, I know. I knew when that.
So what actually is inside this warehouse?
Everything. A third of the building is going to be systems, right? Chillers, mechanical systems, or everything that runs it. A very small portion is like front office, like small meeting room, small place where folks eat. Eighty percent of it is servers.
I had a bunch of stuff written down, but you hit most of it. How about, I mean, the, you know, everybody's talking how these AI buildings are, are causing our electric rates to go up.
Is it a fact?
No.
And what's. Well, I mean, just, so if you looked at, and someone with a phone, Google away, because one of you got it. So I get this in all the states. And let me begin with, I don't know. The first question is, how many data centers have you added in the last three years in the surrounding area? My instinct is looking out here, very little. You have some data centers, some added like twelve to fourteen, but in a three terawatt state, I don't think you're at a gigawatt of data centers in a surrounding hundred mile. So did it cause it today? No, it's the retirement of coal, it's the retirement of plants, it's the losing of baseload because we lost the baseload, we couldn't hear it in Pennsylvania. Can they cause problems tomorrow? Yeah, they can. Absolutely. They're big energy users. Just one, do the utilities want us? They do. Why? Because in order to finance all the new fleet of wires and all the big poles and everything that's going on, like, that they have to do, they need users that are not nine to five. We're in eighty-seven sixty, eighty-seven sixty is number of hours in a year. And so twenty-four seven multiplied by fifty-two, it's eighty-seven sixty. If I'm financing something and you all are buying stuff, and if you've been to a beach town and you bought anything at a beach town, you understand that there's a finite market for the beach town, and they got to make their money back. Utility is the same way. How the heck do I finance all that infrastructure that's needed from not? Again, you got to look, Virginia, did they cause it? Yeah, a hundred percent, right? But here, if that, if they're all over the place, then maybe, but I don't see them. I took the drive out. And here, it's going to be about, well, how does the utility pay for that infrastructure? They need night users. They've lost a lot of manufacturing. They've lost heavy industrial multiple shifts. They got to be able to sell power at night, because if you can only sell it twelve hours a day, how do you monetize that? How do you get to a place, a thirty-year project's now sixty? So they have begun to work with us because we build our own substation. We pay for our own transmission. We pay for the studies. They will then oversize it to be able to deliver what they want, because they have an end user that sucks up night power that no one takes anymore. That's why there's this interesting balance between us and them. Can they outgrow a place? Yeah, you have to watch. You definitely do. They come like Burger King and McDonald's sometimes, and they can come looking because the natural attributes are here. Wires, power, location. I don't know if it's good, bad, but it is here.
How big is a substation? Because you had, you said one building, then you said two buildings, then the picture showed three because of the substations.
Substations.
Is that another hundred thousand?
No, I, substations are weird because they're spread out, right? I call it two and a half acres because you have to get the, the utility truck has to have enough turn, turn radius. They got to pick up here. They use a forty-two foot I hat to do it. So there's particular turn radiuses that are built. Call it two and a half acres when you're done. Most of that is air.
That's an outside area. That's not a building.
Correct. Yeah, a hundred percent outside air cool.
Just a comment.
You have to come up with a microphone.
Stitch your name and address.
Just qualify.
So just a comment, Adam. So in my web browser this morning, Yahoo or whatever, this popped up, and I, it's peculiar, right? So, but it, it, it was from a source called Semaphor, news source, I guess, in Virginia. What we were talking about, and it says, as electricity bills rise, candidates in both parties blame data centers. So, you know, I'm, I'm hearing from you that, you know, the, the impact on electricity rates is, what was your response when Chris had asked previously?
Can, can they impact them? They can. Today, in my opinion, here, no. Are they in Virginia? Yeah, no, a hundred percent. That, that's an overbuild, right? That is, has anyone been there?
This found me. I don't know, I don't know.
Listen, if you want to see how it goes wrong, right? Go to Virginia. It is, did, they zoned it, like, up against residents. They zoned it everywhere. They offered incentives for everyone to come. And when they did, they came. And so you got to be, now, are the utilities a lot smarter today? Yeah, they are. They're fully aware now. They require a lot more work for you to do today. But just in the word of like, sort of like, I was looking at these things as policy, like, well, what could have caused power to go up that quick? Well, if you said there were four or five of these and they reached three hundred fifty megawatts and they all opened around here. So, yeah, that definitely had an effect, no doubt. I don't, I think today, there's been a withdrawal of baseload power in PJM, which we're in. And that withdrawal of baseload power, it's New Jersey, they're, he had the same question about the data center just recently. And as I pointed out, and that's, they've added a total of four hundred megawatts, but New York stopped, withdrew almost nine hundred because they don't act the same way where they used to pull power like straw. And so things are changing. Consumption is down in a lot of places. The habits of people, whole office buildings are changing. It's, it's dynamic. So, is it happening today in Virginia because of data centers? Yes, those are mistakes, legacy mistakes. The designs were mistakes. Is today the utility much more where, hell, yeah, they are. And are they much more robust in how they do it? They are.
Okay. Would that be P and L about this specific project?
Yeah, they have.
And what they've seen so far, do they foresee any infrastructure improvements that they would need to make in order to support your project?
Yes, they would do a direct tap of their line, so they would be physically tapping their wire, and we would be responsible for building our own substation at our cost.
But they're saying they have the capacity on their side to support you.
They do, yeah.
So if they had to build a new transmission line or redo the transmission lines they have, that's the cost on their side that would eventually get rolled into rate payers. But if you just tap it into an existing infrastructure.
Okay, but, correct, okay. Supply and demand, right? So this is going to increase demand. The demand for power, right? So what happens when demand goes up and supply stays static or, you know, goes down, you know, the prices go up?
That's the two half of your electricity bill. You pay for, part of it goes to the infrastructure and part of it goes to the energy. And what Adam is saying, having spent twenty-five years at PICO, I lived this myself, is from the generation side of it, the ideal customer is the customer that's running same amount twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Because that's what a nuclear power plant does. It runs the same amount twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It doesn't throttle up, it throttles out, it doesn't fall off the load. It's a constant. So if you got a constant user, a constant supplier, utility standpoint, that's a good combination.
Right. And as, as you know, the system impact study will eventually do and come through, will, that is exactly as it sounds. The utility looks at all of its impacts to the system to, to bill us. There are no impacts billed. It's, it's no longer allowed to quote, socialize these. Some utilities had that ability at one point. That stopped. And it wasn't actually data centers. It's, it, it started with other LEUs, large energy users. The data centers are the newest, but refrigerated warehouses, ports, universities, you got some big users out here.
Thank you. And then you, you had one, just one comment, one or one additional question. So you described hyperscale versus AI-maxed facilities. Hardware-wise, what's the difference between what goes into these buildings in both scenarios?
Sure, yeah. The servers are pretty close to the same, right? In other words, the physical assets, the servers, it's the utilization rate. So just like the, the crypto dudes, right? They will turn the computer on, they'll burn it literally twenty-four seven until it's done. The reason it burns out is because they don't pay for the liquid cooling and all the other stuff that has to go on, because they don't care. They just do it and they go. Here, if you're going to do AI, they, they want to go towards more robust cooling solutions. So that tends to mean water, right? Can be done. Can be done with other solutions, but it tends to mean water. That's why I said, this one probably wants to move towards storage and towards edge because. It doesn't make a lot of AI can be anywhere, it really can, it can be like out in the hinterlands because it's just learning, it's not really communicative yet. This um, spot is nice to communicate. So that, that's why I can see it. We're not there yet, but. Yeah, I've been around enough of the market last twenty years to kind of know.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Let me stop, but can we let him finish? Let us do our questioning and then I'll open the floor. I need people to come up to the microphone so we can record, record the questions.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, I think that's it on the slides and um, to you if you're ready for questions to council, please. Guys, have anything else?
Any explosive risk associated with these servers or the equipment in the building?
Yeah.
More than usual?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they look a lot like your. A bit more intensive.
What's your battery backup?
Uh, that's interesting, right? We're UPS will be in there on interrupted power supply will be.
Lithium, what acid, what are you?
No, well, UPS is the standard, what I call lithium ion technology today, they're built already into the servers, right? In other words, we don't add them to the servers, they're already built in. Um, and that UPS allows for just a couple of seconds if the utility were to trip or somebody to knock on the wire. So that the servers can shut down properly and do what they have to do to shed the data to the other data centers. We just get rid of it all and then that way it shuts down.
But for the building itself.
Building itself will be standard backup, right? Um, um, gas turbine, right?
Without a battery.
It would have to make economic sense to put a battery in right now. They don't make economies of scale sense. It would be one thing if I were load shifting or something like that, right? And we're doing midnight to six arbitrage.
Right, so what's going?
What's that?
When the lights go out, they're gonna go out.
No, no, they will have a synchronized, uh, they'll have a turbine synchronized with two gensets that will back the turbine. So they'll go to a gas turbine. No, they will definitely be up. That's why shelter a last resort. If power goes out, we will have power for the community. Want to charge phones, police fire, want to work out of there, we will be up.
Everything above grade?
Yeah. Nothing and can't be floodplain, can't be nothing.
Property be fenced?
Yes.
Sorry?
Uh, yes, there will be security, um, determination of guard cameras up to the data center, they run a, uh, depends on how local they are, substation fenced as well.
Have you ever tried to retrofit into an existing building?
Yes.
Doesn't, you'd see all these warehouses that are advertising five hundred thousand square feet.
I'm, I'm heavy and so geotechnically they often don't work. Um, um, can I fit in by taking down like former hospitals where I think like the thing was built like a shit brick house because it had radiological in it? Yeah, I can take them, but they gotta be built. They tend to be something that's not like four square boulders because those things can be light, um, in terms of the floor we need.
Right. Or your equipment is heavy, you need a substantial floor.
Yeah.
Right, you guys have anything else?
All right, I just had one question. This is about the operations. You keep talking about a company that'll operate this, but is this essentially, someone manages the facility, but you lease out space for servers? For other companies or is it one entity that?
One entity owns, operates it. And so let's, there are five of these entities, Oracle, um, Meta, uh. You know, the, the, the five big ones, CoreWeave, right? Um, within them, they take the buildings and then they will sublease to the users that are your application needs. Okay.
It's kind of like a house, you're going to build it and sell it to someone else and then they're gonna own it.
It's, it's almost like a custom, so. We give them all the opportunity, how much, how much power you can add to do all these different studies and plan designs. And then a company comes and says, hey, we would like to be in this area. And then we come back and say, here's the design of the building. You say that, but the work, the light, whatever, and we try to fit everything into whatever zoning class. We don't ask for any variances. We try to, again, the reason why is, is, if we felt it's a good use for not this town, all other towns we're in too, is that. Biggest questions we have is like, you think they're ugly, they're, you know, low income and believes and too much trucks. Right? These things are exactly opposite. Um, it gets good ratables. It's got, you know, high paying jobs and really the traffic is very limited. And so trucks. So it's like everything that, you know, a lot of towns are coming and bringing us in to rezone things. Will help data centers to come in because it's a better use than what the zoning allow. Like I said, I have a fuel station by, by right. I can do truck turnover. I mean, by right, I'm not saying you want traffic and I have to go through that whole hassle, but the point is that that's all I write right now. This right here is something that's kind of new. He, uh, his group looked at all our problems and said, hey, you know, here's someone, it's not, it's not the only one we're working on with Adam. But uh, it really makes sense when you go to town and say, hey, here's the option, you have this or this, this seems to be better option.
I think I gotta clear this mic so he can have the mic.
Is that right?
So please stay up there so you can answer a question because I'm, I'm assuming there's going to be some questions you're gonna. All right, so I'm going to open up public comments. Raise your hand if you want to come up.
Well, we're all done.
Yeah, please do. State your name and address, please. At the mic, please.
Good evening. My name's Michael Broder. I want my address, please. Uh, address nine zero seven Cat Hill Road. About quarter mile from the pros developed. Um, you've mentioned about the output, the fiber optics dedicated line going out or lines. How many of our local roads are anticipated being. Cora, for lack of a better term, not to characterize it, and they, and how deep much you bury these caves.
They follow the current right away of wherever your fiber is today and the fibers are at the site from well, the poles, the side of it. It's um. It's something called the, a company called Crown Castle that owns that fiber. So no extension, um, that's why we're here, right? It has the communications, we'll extend dark fiber from there, which means we'll build our own fiber from the data center. To the, to the point where they're on the pole and then we have a device that, um. It's a trap, it, um, it doesn't, it is a one way street.
Okay.
So um, nobody can get in, but we can send data out and then on the reverse side of it. The computers can lock out and should anything happen. So we ride current fiber.
Okay, and as you know about the current plant being situated near three oh nine, there is, because of the height of your building, lighting requirements going around. But there's also reverberation effect, meaning when you have any noise, it hits that side of three oh nine and it kind of comes back. Do you have any ideas to what that's going to amplify and turn out to be, say, to the first house, if you will, that farmhouse across the road from you?
No, they will do noise studies as part of it because they've usually been fired by local towns to do them, but now we haven't, we have not engaged in any noise studies. They bring in an acoustic expert to kind of design it. And so they'll look at like what's around, how it reverberates. Can they angle the building separately, right? In other words, can you turn it slightly angled? And then what is the encasement around it, right? What are you putting around it? In some cases, it's um, a fence with like, what is, what is effectively like a um. An high insulator, high R value wall and then pine trees behind it or whatever.
Right. But until you get the facility there, you cannot theoretically figure out what you're looking at in terms of design configuration until you start building the facility?
Well, for that, when we come in the. The difference to you all, and if I'm wrong, throw something at me. Um, typically in this process, we would come in with a site plan. Site plan would have all the requirements that can we come back and say before we would approve your design, you need to give us. Noise study, you need to do traffic studies.
That do traffic studies for us.
And then there's a few other things out here. So all of those would have to be done. We're just early in this process. Studies then get produced and then ultimately the town. Um, says you're sufficient, the town professionals say sufficient, not submission. Um, early in.
Early in. So again, we don't know final design features, final resource demands of the site as of yet. Even though you talk about basic design, we're talking about at least two one hundred twenty five thousand square foot buildings. And a, and a substation onsite, the size of that has not been communicated yet. That's the, the total size of the area.
I am, I always defer to the utility because that's their standards and it has more to do with a truck turnaround.
Right.
Um, if you've seen them, they're, you see, but they, um, you know, kind of transformer. And they've had a lot of space and a transformer between them and they're fed above. Um, and that's usually so they can both, um, fire, right? So fire can get to them, but also so they can make their bigger truck.
Right.
Get in, over, pick anything up there.
Right. But I'm also like, no is total impervious surface for that lot? What is the, what is the theoretical calculation now?
I don't think you've even done.
All right. Okay.
Meet and greet, understand the process. I mean, something to develop, but if it's a warehouse, storage, what's on the list? We're going to develop something, you know, after being Adam with the idea that this would be a really good opportunity for something.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hey, please. Say your name and address, please.
Um, Krista Green and seven one seven Cat Hill. Okay. Okay, thanks. Um, there are some structures on the property currently, um, what is to become of them? Okay. I noticed that there's already some removal of, um, some trees and it, it looks like it's toward the back of the property. Is that kind of where the building would take place? Or would the, the buildings, um, the structures be more toward the front of the property?
Yeah, that's more of a design thing, but we're. Do you understand that because neighbors there?
I, I could comment on that.
Yeah.
The current property owner got a four shoot permit to selectively cut trees in the back of the property.
Okay.
That.
Is separate.
Tree work that was done had nothing to do with this potential development.
Okay. Um, yeah, because I noticed them being dragged down. Yeah, okay. Um, and then, you know, if this does go through, would this be something where the community, people that live in the area surrounding? Could we help with some type of landscape design, buffering and things like that?
All those things, I mean, anytime we do the design, we always come first and we always try to do it in a way that, that. It doesn't affect you.
And that would take place before the sale, like that would all be part of the design process. And then what about once somebody comes in, they could change things down the road or ask for variances?
And we have site plan with trees and township everywhere, something she changes in the building, all different things, trying to make the building look nicer. So it's not like one of those. You know?
Okay, I mean, there, there's currently a buffer of trees along the road that would be removed or that would be something that would be. Okay.
And then trees will pop it, that's really.
Okay. And um, possible lighting at night? I mean, is it something like?
For the warehouses, I mean, when we do those things, there is.
I understand.
But these, with, with this development, there's not as much lighting.
Not as much light at night. Okay.
Can I offer just maybe an idea that, which you counsel, right? If um, sometimes like in advance, we'll do some visioning charade where you can kind of just sit everybody down and just do exactly that. You guys know the areas, it's, it's, there were landscape this way, this type of trees, this type of foliage for winter coverage, does it make sense?
Yeah, because many of us live, I mean, directly across the street. So when we look out of my front yard, that's what I see. So I, I mean. Right. Um, so I'm thinking, is there a reason why you would put the buildings toward the front of the property versus the back of the property? Is there?
The back of property kind of goes down, that's a very, very back of property. But I don't think it, it wouldn't be against the property where it wouldn't be the first, I don't know what to call it. I don't know what it would set back this property, but I think it was set back.
Okay.
Second.
But that's also something that we could possibly discuss and, okay. Um, and then the power lines, it would be before the power lines? Would there be anything past the power lines?
I mean, we don't have any building.
Yeah.
That's what you thought about it. They're allowing, instead of putting new power lines.
In front of your station.
Big power lines, they're already there. So the next part of this development is huge.
Mm hmm. Right, but the building would be on the one side of the power line, not on the other, not on both sides of the power line?
The side where.
The industry, the building are.
South side.
Okay.
And there's an intermittent stream of wetlands at the front, so they couldn't even, with the building.
Okay.
Right up along the.
But. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Suoh Shura, seven fifteen Cat Hill Road. I just have a question concerning the water supply. We all have wells. I'm in the farmhouse directly across from you guys. Do you know what I mean? And how's that going to affect our water supply or are we going to be required to? Because we all have septic tanks and, you know, wells. How's that going to affect our water supply? Are you going to make your own wells? Or are you going to require everybody on that road to put in water and sewer?
No, we have, um, we have no authority over other folks on the road.
I didn't know what the township would do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
In that case. Do you know what I mean?
What are you, what do you think your water needs are going to be?
I mean, it will go air cool design, but you know, some, most of these things are five thousand GPD, some are some two thousand GPD. And if it's a closed system, I can spend like a month charging the system to slow withdraw. And then once it's closed, it's a closed loop cooled system.
Right.
Um, so it, I mean, we back in, um, typically, um, we don't like, we don't co-mingle with like. The, what I'll loosely call the well system, um, generally if I'm withdrawing. You know, I'm generally on a well system, I'm trying to make that as little as possible because. You know, one, there's regulations that follow it and two, um, it's not, uh, we'd prefer to be on like regular water if we could. Um, we'll, you know, so we'll work around it. So the answer is no, we can't.
Okay. I didn't know whether you were thinking maybe of hooking in to Telford? Or, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
That was what.
Coming from the back on the back of.
So underneath. And then you'd have to get. Yeah.
If our screen down below.
Yes. Then you go, right. Okay.
Does that include something?
Yeah.
Is Teva or whoever they are now, are they on that?
TBL and no.
Yeah, they. I'll, I'll say Teva, but yeah, they used to have a sewage, they're on sewage treatment plant. At some point they connected, threw and pumped it up to Telford system in, uh, Meeting House Road.
And that's something that they.
They could do a similar thing.
But not tie into that one?
Well, I don't know if they could use the same course line or not, that's privately owned, I'm not sure, but. Yeah, I thought it was sort of a private.
Get to go under East Branch. Up. Oh, it is, okay. Right away, sleep catcher. We're stuffing.
All right. Any other public comment, Dave?
Hey, Dave Rice, two nineteen Augustine. Um, question, would they be doing a worse, uh, resource impact study? So you're saying five thousand gallons, a thousand gallons per day? Per building?
Uh, it depends on the design, whether we centralize like the chiller system.
Okay.
Two separate, not, not there yet.
So we don't want to see a tower built like Grand Hospital had to do, right?
Water tower, you're talking?
Yeah, so we don't want to see anything like that. So I guess when I look at what's zoned in West Rock Hill, we have a ten thousand gallons per day or greater groundwater. Um, which would require the water resource impact study. So if you're saying five thousand per building. And then you're saying. Water suppression or fire suppression? So you'd be over that threshold, so you'd have to do that. Do you really want to have to worry about a tower being, a water tower being put on a property and where would you put it?
Yeah, we would, we would not, um.
So you'd have to scale down?
Uh, we could, um, it can, we could also change system, right? System designed for water use and some of the closed systems can allow me to withdraw at a much slower rate, but I need lead time, right? So if I get there and I take thirty days.
So you could drive everybody, run dry in the meantime. So as you're filling, you could run everybody's well dry.
No, what that is, is we would run under the two thousand GPD or four thousand because I don't need to withdraw as fast. Because I can spend thirty days charging the system. It's a closed loop system, so it's like a.
Understood.
Um, and so, um, we often do it that way because, um, oh, one, we have time, um, there's no reason to rush it. And two, uh, to what you raised, it often takes less pressure on it.
Correct.
Um, I find that the water thing is about, um, not just the constant use because that's to your question about well withdrawal, right? This is an aquifer under here. Um, but it's also about how they chart when they come on because they tend to want to be there. They've learned a little bit that it's just easier, um, but more importantly, the design side caught up. If you look at the chillers, you look at what likes being designed out there, not just for us, everybody's in the same exact closed loop system now.
Okay.
And there's a good chance it's going to be public. Anyway.
Certain assumption, but, uh, I mean, I guess I just don't also buy the whole electric, the, the usage and the impact on the grid. So that's, I think, a little bit short sighted. That's all.
Like I said, it's different, it's a different thing. Yeah, no, no, I appreciate that.
So what you're saying is you'd take thirty days to fill your, your chiller needs. And then after that, it's just operational needs.
Correct, some hyper evaporation, maybe some here or there, but again, we backed into the impacts of the system. So they prefer not, um, water is an expense and water is a political thing. They prefer to go away. Um, and as I said, there are in places where there's not a lot of water, so.
You have a truck in it.
And somebody do an impact study out there.
Can somebody do an impact study out there? A lot of test holes.
On that property?
Yeah.
Well, Teva had proposed an office building on that site and there might be a study from at the time when they, when they did that.
Right.
I, I don't recall because I don't remember how that jived up with their interconnection with Telford.
Corey has one that goes out to about one avenue, I think, maybe just a little bit short from their de-watering stuff.
Right. All right, anyone else? Tony?
Tony Bogner, Climber Avenue. Um, the chemical for the fire suppressant, what is the chemical?
And not undecided yet. Um, it's if it's not water, um, it'll be up to the fire department generally or by state code, kind of as allowed. So, um, but we're not there yet. We haven't got the basis.
What, what typically do you use and?
Water. High pressure water. So typically we would use water if we can. Um, if they have a foam suppressant, um, I forgive me, it's not mine. That's the chemistry's the fire side of it. We can get it for you, but it's whatever the standard is that the fire department accepts that code typically.
Because I, I know what the, the battery warehouse, that was an issue because it.
Yeah.
It, I mean, we all have wells and.
Yeah.
We have problems with the PFAS here and, and if it's, I just, you know, I'd like to know what the chemical is that you're using.
Yeah, I'll get the fire folks to, to run what they use if they use a chemical suppressant.
Okay.
It's in, it's interior, so it's to the server room, so.
I know, but once you have a fire, you got water everywhere.
Yeah.
It's all over the ground and it goes right down to the creek.
Yeah, stormwater can get, right.
And there's a lot of people here that live along the creek, so.
You would make sure stormwater, all the stuff that has to go into the next level, all the civil will get in there. Actually work for.
No, you buy enough stuff from me, get a shirt.
Yeah. Thought I saw a local business opportunity right there.
Anyone else? I'm going to just pull them back. We're at the end. Oh, you should have started. The water system itself, does that require chemical additives?
No.
None at all? All right, thank you. Thanks for coming up. Anyone else? All right, seeing no more public comment requests. Um, so you're just here as a. Informal sketch, bringing us up to speed on what you want to do. Well, and thanks for coming out and thanks for really, uh, tutorial.
Yeah, my pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks.
Drive carefully. The deer are in abundance.
All right. Next on the agenda is select properties, Augustine Road, uh, sewage facility plan. You have somebody here from. Select. Go get them.
Yeah, you're up. Go ahead. Which one are we talking about first?
Augustine.
Okay, well, um, well, we were only here actually requested just for the sewage facilities, planning modules, uh, this evening, not for the actual sketch plan. So, and we had discussed at the last planning meeting, the sewer issues that we faced with in Augustine, as well as in the next planning module, Lawn and Ridge. So we're just here to seek the, uh, planning commission's execution of component four A. I believe Steve has set forth, uh, suggested completion of that component. There are certain caveats. Um, I believe the township would like the planning commission to add to their component so that we can then move the sewage facilities, planning module forward to the supervisors for their review and consideration as well.
So this, the form for DEP is filled out. Uh, we have a, uh, an area that we can make comment. I think item fourteen is probably where those comments are going to fall in. Sewer facility plan. So this, if DEP gets this, this doesn't influence the township or they're not getting close to township to say that, uh, area one is, has been fulfilled and area two is now open.
So the, the issue that's going to be faced when we get to DEP, I would assume that the supervisors will not find the planning module consistent with their Act five thirty seven plan based upon Steve's comments. That will likely result in us having to file a private request with DEP. At that point, DEP takes a look at the entire sewer planning process for the township as well as how it's supposed to service this property. And they're going to determine whether or not, uh, what the township said is correct, that it's not consistent or whether the Act five thirty seven plan is inadequate and needs to be revised. At that point, I don't know what DEP would do. They have a hundred and eighty days from the date of a private request. Uh, they seek comment from the township, input from the township, they seek input from the applicant as well. And then DEP probably will reach out to the, uh, to the Telford Borough Authority as well, given that they're designated as the sewer provider for region two. And then somebody's going to try to work it out, hopefully. That's my hope. I, I don't know where that's going to lead or how that gets resolved, but that is the process. As the landowner, we don't have, and this is what we discussed last time, we don't have a choice. Um, we're stuck in a designated sewer service area. We can't just pick a new provider. We don't have that ability. That's left to the township and to DEP.
Steve, you have anything to add to that?
Um, yeah, I guess just for clarity purposes, what's before the planning commission tonight is requiring in the overall process of the sewage facilities planning modules. You're not being asked to prove it, deny it, you're just being asked for comment on what, what's submitted. Could be positive comments, could be negative comments. Obviously, the comments that I had drafted recognize that there is no, and you know, the plan approval is still pending, so there's still potential issues with that. And for a service area two, which, under, you know, the township's interpretation of our agreements with Telford is not available to be served at this time. And, you know, that's what we're suggesting you include in your comments. It's, again, it's not an approval of the planning module. It's your comments regarding what was proposed and what's proposed is public sewer service via Telford Borough, right?
Right, and this is just one component of three components of multiple components of an administrative, and that's what it is.
Right.
There's about eight, eight components to the planning module, Bucks County.
County Health Department.
And planning commission, yeah.
And, um.
Planning commission.
Plan Commission will have a similar component. It'll all get resubmitted again, once it's all packaged together, it gets resubmitted again to the board of supervisors.
Right.
They're the ones that actually, you know, approve or, or disapprove.
They have, yeah, they have a resolution to determine whether it's consistent. DEP is actually the entity that has the approval authority or not. But typically, if a township says it's consistent and that plan that they say it's consistent with already has DEP approval, then DEP approves it. When you get into these types of situations, one or two things happens. Either the township says no and it goes away or you have a private request from an applicant to ask DEP to reevaluate that five thirty seven plan. And that's where I think we're headed because of the issues between the township and the authority, not necessarily between the township and the applicant here. We acknowledge we're in a public sewer service area. That's all we can do. So.
All right. So as I initially stated, item fourteen, um, you know, it, it says that you're in service area two and it's not designated for a public sewer service at this time. I think that would be a good place, uh, or add comment, uh, via Steve's comments. Um, that not only is it not available, that why it's not available is because service area one has not been satisfactorily filled, satisfactorily filled. Um, we also have the issue that, uh, Sellersville uh, has not come to any agreement with Telford, nor they have, they, uh, looked into any of the capacity issues with the new wellings.
Well, that, that we, we do understand that the Telford has submitted its, um, updated special study to Sellersville. So they are in the process of, uh, I think, working that issue out. Um, so that'll be in front of this planning module, I think, timing wise, but. So these can go sequentially. In other words, the DEP will obviously wouldn't approve anything in the future unless and until that has been addressed as well.
Steve, there's no construction associated with it. This is just.
No. Yeah, this is just planning, planning, all this is planning.
Yeah, hoops.
Yes, that's correct.
Blaming hoops.
That is correct.
Because of the various moving parts to this, it's not exactly a sequential process. They send out these forms to all the different agencies, try to get the responses back, have to respond to the comments and concerns raised and eventually submit it to the, to the board of supervisors as a complete package.
Right.
So it's not, again, you're not approving it or denying it, you're only making comment on it. So it's, it's, it's a part of the overall process.
Yeah, we call it administrative. The, these components are four A, B, and C. And until anything, it has to all be filled out. It's like checking the checklist, you make your comments, then that one's checked and then it gets to the board for their action.
And that, I, I mean, an attempted zoo.
Well, so like where does the public, where does like the public notice get addressed and where does the, uh, where does a uh, requirement for them to prove that they could have on, to unlock systems and event that they don't get the sewer and where's like all that get addressed?
Well.
Is that in our comments or is it in our?
That'd be in the completed planning.
Yeah, so you can't put a notice in until there's been a module that's fully complete. So your administrative component needs to be complete, everybody else's does. And then notices only triggered if certain things occur. I'm not sure whether or not notice is required for this module or not.
It's not in compliance with five thirty seven. And it would be required.
What consultant believes it's required?
Yeah, I was going to say we'll probably do one for that issue. Sometimes it's not required. But then that, but then that notice goes out once all the components are in and everything's in. There's also capacity certifications, three J three, um, in the planning module. So once that's done, then there's a thirty day comment period, then the comments come back, then the supervisors can take action on it. They can't take action until the public notice period has expired.
Every one of the entities can't wait to be the last one backed on it because they would never get to that point. The supervisors are the ones that could wait for all the information to act on it. Um, and, and as Mr. Adelman said, when they get some more of these documents, you don't want to do that public notice too early because then people could complain that they didn't have the full information.
And DEP would kick it, DEP will kick it back if it's missing something or it was done prematurely.
And the public notice is usually one of the last things before they would come to the board of supervisors.
Right, and then when those comments are made, the, the applicant who's doing the planning module issues draft responses and hopes the township will accept them or the township will do some type of responses because that's also part of the full complete planning module before it goes to DEP for their consideration. You have to respond to comments. We're going to have to respond to your comments. We have to respond to the county health department and county planning commission comments as well. All those responses need to be part of the correspondence section of the planning module. It's a lot of paper.
So this represents two of the three projects that we've seen for far along to this black hole with Telford.
Well, yeah, we had the other one, Lawn and Ridge.
Right, the other one that's on the agenda is a similar situation.
That's correct.
But then the third one is the other side of.
That's PRA.
Right, right.
That's PRA and.
Which one? One is the townhouse, is the twenty five town.
Oh, the other side of, behind Fasagio.
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be the same, same thing, situation. Yeah, we just haven't gone that far yet with that plan.
So we're going to go through this at least one more time.
Well, we have it on tonight's agenda as well. That's the second component. There's two.
Right, but we'll go through the same process for every development that comes through, every individual site.
But the third one isn't on it.
No, that's correct. And we can't do them together. They can't be global. They have to be individual. Their, their new land development revisions is how DEP terms them. So every single property where you have the development, you have to have a separate sewage facilities planning approval for. So you have to go through each one of these. Yeah, no, I, I can't, I can't. Yeah, it would make sense, but you can't. DEP won't accept it. They won't process it that way.
You've handled these on many, on every project in the past, but when it's not controversial, it's, I don't want to say rubber stamp, but it's, it's a simple process when it's not.
Yeah, right, I understand.
When everything falls into place.
Yeah, typically, when you have no questions on consistency, no questions on capacity, there's no overloads in the system, you can even exempt out of this process and you just do this little postcard where it just certifies there's no overloads in a five year period or whatever. Here, we obviously have issues in terms of the public sewer service area availability. And that really is what's highlighted in this planning module.
Okay, so does anyone want to add comments to the, to the form?
Beyond Steve's or?
Well, including Steve's.
I definitely would like to add Steve's.
Yes.
No, I agree, and I, I don't have anything else to add.
Right, I, I don't have anything beyond what.
It's not beyond what Steve has here, but yeah.
The only other one I'm looking at is number three, is this proposal consistent with the use, development, protection of water resources?
I'm assuming at this point you're proposing public water as well.
Brian, is that right?
No.
No, Augustine, that's not. Right now we have wells. So, and that's whatever specified in the planning module. I believe the, I believe, uh, the next one is public waters and at the.
Lawn and Ridge.
Lawn and Ridge, yes. Yeah, so the second one is public.
But I believe the lot of resources that they're talking about is not public water.
Oh, they're talking about well.
Streams and.
Oh, streams, well.
Water.
You mean natural.
Natural resources.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and it's like they do the archaeological and endangered plants.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed one there. But if you wanted to make a comment about a concern for wells, you can make whatever comment you want to have to this.
Yeah.
Not bound by anything.
But that, neither of those boxes are checked on this, on numbers.
Yeah, I realize. That's what Andy just pointed out.
So.
So we should check it, no, and, and put down the wells, right?
If you want to make a comment about wells, we could shoehorn it into that item. If we explain why we're saying no, it's, it's the well issue.
The well issue.
I understand you're correct. Your concern is that it's proposing public wells not, I mean, proposing individual wells, not public water.
Right, in nine, mine or additional. Right, individual wells.
The comments that we had in the.
Well, we are, we are evaluating it. Um, you know, currently we're still looking at all lot wells, but we are evaluating public water. So I can't tell you that's a no at this point.
All right, so before we take action, I'm going to open the floor to public comment. Is there, is there any more discussion before we do this? Like I said, I'm comfortable with what we come up with, but, uh, all up on the floor. Brian, how you want to go?
You raise your hand?
Only for five minutes. He didn't have to.
Brian Landis, one twenty five Augustine Road. Just some clarification because you guys, I think, reversed what your position was last year. So this is the latest thing that came out from the township with the developments and everything in yellow is a select property development. And what we had talked about, and it was your comment last year, was I had said something about, hey, it seems like they're controlling our township and we're losing it. And what we asked for is before we could move, or you guys did, before we can move forward with anything is we want it, uh, an overall picture. And what it sounds like to me is, and, and one of the things that I've noticed, whether it's North Penn Water Authority or TBA, we get incrementalized. So when the North Penn Water Authority came, nobody else is tying in and somebody gets tied in, right? And then Telford Borough, uh, Telford Borough Authority runs that sewer line up Almont. And they, you know, everybody's failing and they're not. So, you know, it's just module one, but that's how you incrementalize. And if you take it in pieces, they finally get where they want to go. So I just wanted to clarify because what I just heard you guys say is they, if they have to do it now in pieces versus a chunk. But I think the reason we talked about that with all these developments, because the eighty two homes behind where the, where the airstrip used to be, the forty five behind Fasagio or behind Fasagio is the twenty six, you're at a hundred and seventy some homes. And in kind of what happened over on County Line, there's ninety grinder pumps, you know? How is it all going to tie together? And I think that's what we had asked is what you're over, and I know that the other side of the road is PRA in this side, but there should still be a vision versus us kind of making it up as we go. And at the last meeting that we had here, they were here and they talked about, there's going to be eight wells required on Augustine Road. And the comment was, well, you only need to do a water study if there's fifteen wells. And this is, I talked about the DEP, there's not enough water around here to be putting more wells in. So I do think that it, there needs to be an overall plan before we move forward with where's the, how's it gonna get served with sewer and how's it gonna get served with water on both sides of the road? Uh, because we all know there's conversations going on behind the scenes. I heard that PRA is now talking to TBA about how to best serve all this and then the region one, region two um situation. But I just think it's good instead of making it up as we go to have that overall plan. But I, I think I heard the opposite, that you guys are now considering letting them break it up in pieces.
Well, let me respond as you're pointing your finger at me.
I'm sorry. Conversation.
That's why specifically as Steve, whether there's any construction associated with this or whether it's basically paper. In response to God, it's basically paperwork. There's no construction. As far as construction is concerned, that is still my primary concern is being piecemeal. And if there is no big picture, there is no overall plan that puts all this together into something that makes sense for the community, not just select properties.
Okay.
So that, that's still, he personally, where I want to go. But as far as what we're talking about tonight, I think this is something off to the side that doesn't impact whether it's piecemeal or big picture.
Okay.
I, I tend to say you are being consistent with that concept. Let me explain. The overall plan is the township five thirty seven plan. And at this point, this is zone two of the TBA area that's not supposed to be served at this point. And your comment, as I understand it, is it's not consistent with the plan because they're in zone two.
Right.
So there, that would be consistent with the overall concept of the township sewage disposal at this time. On the big picture item, just by the fact that how DEP and municipal planning codes work, the paperwork has to be done on an individual basis. You can't.
I'm with you there. Yeah, I get that. I understand. Okay.
So they have to do the paperwork on an individual basis. But the comment, I believe, you're thinking consistent with the plan of it's not consistent with the township.
It just, they can do the paperwork separately, but they still think they owe you guys, here's how we envision this happening fluidly across a hundred and ninety homes. And then do the paperwork individually. So that makes sense to me. I understand what you're saying. We did say that on the other side, we wanted to see a coherent plan of how everything was getting sewed because it looked like parcel A was gonna go and it'd run sewer to that. And then parcel B would somehow connect to A and C to B or whatever. I think we'd like to see the same thing on the other side of three oh nine to address all three of these projects and how that's all gonna fit together.
Well, not, not only that, but with the other people, you know, there's, there's other residents beyond the one hundred, whatever number.
Right.
You're going to be coming in. The people live here already. And A, I would like to see that there be an opportunity for those people, everybody else, to participate in public water as soon. And I certainly would not want to see that whatever ultimately gets proved shuts them out. So that nobody else could get help with water sewer without spending a billion dollars for a whole new system because the system was only designed to cover these three, three developments. So that's why I'm. That's why I think from a community standpoint, it's a, it's a bigger picture than just these properties. But I understand for government paperwork standpoint, you gotta do it this way.
Well, do that two point two. There's a lot of other developments on here beyond select properties in addition to the neighbors too. So I agree. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Dave?
Hey, David, it's two nineteen Augustine. I, you wanna stand over there so I can hit you?
All right.
You're good. I don't like people behind me. We're good. I just think there's a bunch of pieces that I think since they're small pieces of each of the puzzle pieces. So if you took a puzzle and you took it apart with the pieces, which is what we're looking for in the overall plan, and you broke one of those corners off, that puzzle would be incomplete. So this is what we're looking at in an overall plan with Brian is just piggybacking on everything Brian said. I think for you guys tonight, I think the option, the best option would be to table it and wait until all the puzzle pieces actually fit together with all the checks checked on the boxes with the overall plan. Because I mean, I think just puzzling, you know, pulling these little pieces out and just saying, oh yeah, this one tonight, this one tonight, it just seems kind of hokey. Just on a real, realistic plan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Specifically this project. We're gonna make it to what's. What's on the agenda? So this would be about select property at Augustine Road. If you want to, we'll have public comment at the end. Thanks. Anyone else? All right. So, how do you want to handle this? I think we agreed to, to add Steve's comments plus check the box, no on number three with well concerns.
Yeah, that we don't feel is consistent with the five thirty seven plan is what Steve's comments say.
Yeah. So.
Then what the authorization.
Who drafts this? That I have. You don't?
I will redraft it and, I mean, if you make a motion to authorize signature with X, Y, and Z comments.
Right.
Since this is a little bit more complicated, I could redraft it and distribute it. So you don't sign it until you see what the final.
Right. That's what I was. I'll take your app.
You just wanted to make sure he didn't have to write.
All right, so you want to make a motion to do what Steve just brought?
Yeah. A motion that we, uh. A motion that we.
Wait.
Approve this for signature with the comments from Steve and indication that there's concern about water resources in the area using private wells. And inconsistent with the private. Right, that's Steve's.
That's in Steve's comments. Yep. We get a second. I'll second it. All right, motions been made, discussions. All in favor? Aye.
No.
Stations? Motion carries. All right, moving on, same thing, different property.
Yeah, same, same issue with respect to the sewer region two for lawn and ridge. I think Steve's comments were similar as well.
So this is.
Identical virtually, yeah, in terms of the comments, except there's no water withdrawal from the subsurface. It's proposed to be public water.
Gotcha. And then the same situation as the last one, if you remember, you know, this goes back several years. Twenty twenty three, I think, was the last time we talked about this. You never did make a recommendation for approval on the plan. So there's the same comment in, in here about zoning and subdivision.
Right.
It's subject to the final, the final land development. But as Mr. Edelman said, the sewer question is the same, it's the same.
Right.
Extension of a force main system from Telford ultimately through Sellersville.
This really doesn't have to do with what you're requesting here. There was a rumor going around that there's another plan being considered for that property.
There, there was at one point, but no longer.
It's off the table.
Yes.
All right, so if we're gonna consider this one, same comments, but without number three.
It doesn't have the well issue, right?
Right.
Correct. But it still has the inconsistency with the five thirty seven plan.
Right. It would be the, it would be the same comments as the last one without the, without the water comment. Is there any other comments anyone would like to make?
Sorry, changing three to no?
Number three, no, it's, it is consistent.
It's consistent.
This one doesn't have the well issue.
Okay.
Um, all right, so everyone's pleasure. If so, would someone make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, opposed?
Posed.
Station, motion carries.
Great. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, moving forward, old business. I don't have any, anyone having any old business? Anything we need to talk about in old business, Steve, that you know of?
Old, no.
No. You have old?
I was confused when I saw the supervisor's agenda for tomorrow night with regard to Butter Creek Builders being one. Supervisor's agenda for approving the development. At last month, they declined at the public meeting.
If, my best interpretation for you, if they were going down the road of declining, then they ultimately gave this solicitor direction to prepare an approval resolution that required split driveways. And then that approval resolution was provided to Mr. Snyder, who happened to be here tonight. And I don't know yet if he's agreed to it or not agreed to it. So I don't know what, they haven't taken a vote on it. I don't know what'll happen tomorrow night. But the original resolute, the resolution was prepared to say split driveways.
So then that wouldn't automatically trigger coming back through us again.
No.
Thank you. No, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand the process. I'm sorry you felt offended in life, but I'm just trying to understand the process. That's all I have tonight.
Business, I have none. You have something, Steve?
Uh, just to say, there's other plans, sketch plans out there and I anticipate that there'll be, you know, activity for next month's meeting.
All right, you guys have any new business? All right, we'll move into public comment. Just come up and state your name and address. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi. I'm Amy Pacoan, fifty two Halfler Road. I'm concerned about the large number of residential units proposed around the intersection of Ridge and Lawn. I understand approximately one hundred seventy five units are being proposed by select, although it's hard to keep track. The average household in the U S is two point five people, so that's approximately four hundred thirty seven new people at that intersection. Um, West Rock Hill's density per the twenty twenty three census was only three hundred thirty four people per square mile, never mind four thirty seven at one intersection. Select's development is also inconsistent with our West Rock Hill twenty nineteen comprehensive plan update, which predicted one hundred sixty residential units over twenty years. The plan also notes village center development should be consistent with existing density, but these select properties are not. I understand we can't stop all development, um, but so many units at one location doesn't really make sense to me. We have no public transportation, no sidewalks, and very limited commercial businesses in this area. It's not a walkable community that you typically associate with townhomes, such as the ones currently being built in Souderton, which I think are also select. I'm also very concerned about the increase in traffic at Ridge and Lawn. Uh, a few months ago, I reached out to the township for a traffic study and provided a twenty twenty three version that's now out of date. It is, it does not include all of select's residential units and included turning lanes that Wawa was going to install, which I think was maybe gonna be sheets. And now I think that's what he was saying is not happening anymore. Um, some of us saw a traffic consultant on Ridge a few months ago, so perhaps select was updating their traffic survey. But if they are traffic counting during that time, that's when the majority of Ridge Road was closed for the water line installation. Right, so, um, so I'm sure you would all be very critical when you review that, but they will be skewing their data too low. Finally, I'm concerned by how select, uh, the select units will impact West Rock Hill Elementary, where my two children attend. I asked the township about, um, an impact, any impacts on the school and they told me to contact the school. Um, um, all due respect, but I'm hoping that you guys or other township members are actively coordinating with the school as opposed to me, a random, um, a random community member. Um, again, it's, it's hard for me to keep track of how many units are even being proposed in this area. That's it. Thank you very much.
Kelly Fox, two eleven Holliday House Road, um, exactly what she said, but not quite as fast. I'm gonna use that black fiber to get it that quick. But, uh, she, she had a good point, which was the school. And it's not only that corner there is the West Rock Hill School, you have Sellersville School and you have it three and a half miles out to the high school. So for them that put all these houses up from a brand new, uh, St. Luke's Hospital where they're landing helicopters and they're running ambulances in there four, fourteen times a day. Now you're putting all this traffic right here at the high corner of Ridge Road. Is that what we want?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Gwen Jordan, ten thirty Valley Road. Um, I'm a little concerned also with these developments going in. I don't see any attempt at conservation of our land in this community. When the developments go in, you put open space requirements within a development. But ten, ten acres here, fifteen acres there. It doesn't do anything for the wildlife that need more than ten or fifteen acres to walk around on. So I'm just a little upset that all this development is coming in here and that the conservation of the land isn't being given thought and the wildlife isn't being given thought. The traffic, yes, that's a bother to me as well. I don't live up in that way. I don't travel that way much. But I care about the land around me and what is being taken away and will never come back if we put these houses there. And that's what I feel.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So just to follow up, uh, we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting. Tim actually, uh, made some comments. So to your point, um, if we want to really drive change, we need to come to the Board of Supervisors. They control, if I get this right, the, the ordinances. So if we want to change, we talked about what's mitigated development in the past is we haven't perked and you need to drill a well with public water and sewer coming, and I'll use Augustine as an example. If you took public water and sewer, you could put two hundred houses on that road. There's no outlet, but because it's not there, we don't perk. It's what limited the housing. So if, if we all really want to keep more open space, we need to, to me, we've hit the numbers. When they talk about this curative amendment, Steve, I think it's called, where we have to, we have to allow for a certain amount of housing. I've been trying to find out what that number is and nobody can tell me. I've called Bucks County Planning Commission. I've talked to the Board of Supervisors. So what is that number? We've already hit the two thousand and thirty five numbers just with proposed select's properties. But when you talk to people, what they'll say is, well, the, the houses aren't in the ground yet. So on one hand, we'll look at a plan down the road, but we only base our decisions based on what's built, whether it's schools. Because if you talk to Pen Ridge right now, they'll tell you this, the attendance is declining. But when you talk about thousands of houses coming, you know that's going to change. So we should be looking ahead. But we, we need to, the tenants tonight, I mean, there's been meetings, Dave and I have been here, there's been three of us, and we need to keep coming out, guys. Because there's some resident, the, the gentleman in the back there, the comments, you guys know, you're, you're all subject matter experts and, and these guys don't know everything. So I think it's helpful for us all to share what we know about what's going on in our backyards in the community and ask good questions to help them make good decisions. Um, but also with the Board of Supervisors, if we truly want to drive change, um, use an example, one house per acre. I mean, if we've hit our number, we need to be asking the Board of Supervisors. We have elections coming up. If you think we have a pro-development Board of Supervisors, we need to be electing Board of Supervisors candidates that aren't pro-development. But that's up to y'all, but, but that's the kind of stuff we need to be doing. This is a long game. This isn't gonna be something we're gonna change next week. We just need to keep coming to these meetings, guys. And there might not be anything on the agenda that's interested to you, but you just never know what pops up. Um, so thanks for coming out, but if you can, just please keep coming to meetings because I know I appreciate and hopefully, you know, I think these guys do too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board of Supervisors tomorrow. Anyone else for public comment? All right, seeing none, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Out here early.